At the moment, right now, we have members of Economic Development and some members of the community. We do have a member of this committee with us, who is President Justin Hurst. So I feel comfortable with starting the meeting. I know that I did have a conversation with Counsel Fenton. He might be joining us. And I sent a correspondence to Counsel Williams. And I know that after four o'clock, it's very tough for him to get to these meetings. So I want to just get to our agenda, and I want to call this meeting into order. Today is September 14th. Well, I'm lost in the abyss. I apologize. Is it the 14th? I'm lost. I lost my mind.
Yeah, it is. And I'm here, by the way.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so we have a member of our committee, Counsel Fenton, joined us. Counsel Justin Hurst. And before I begin this meeting, we're going to go around the table to just begin introducing ourselves and who we're representing. I'm going to start with the administration, with Mr. Tim Sheehan. And then you can introduce your team, then we can go down the line with everybody else that's on the call.
Good. Tim Sheehan, Chief Development Officer. Brian Connors is on the phone, as well as Alvin Allen. And that's our team.
All right. So we have also part of the administration. We have Mr. Richie Allen, that I see that he is on with us. Mr. Allen, can you hear us? Just want to make sure that you're connected. All right, fantastic. We have Robert Roburge. We still have Motorola Edge Plus. We have Tim's phone. And also, we have Michael Wang. Is there anybody that I missed? Oh, Bernard Soprano? Is that how you say that, sir? I apologize.
Richie Spirito. I'm with the CFO.
Spirito.
Springfield Museums.
Spirito. There we go. Thank you so much. Thank you for clarifying that, sir. Good to see you. All right. So we're going to start with our first agenda item. And our first agenda item is we have the Chestnut Junior High School RFP recommendations. I was alerted by Economic Development from Brian Connors. So I would let Mr. Brian Connors, or also Tim Sheehan, take it away. And gentlemen, you have the floor.
Given that Brian did most of the legwork on this, I'll let Brian take it away.
Brian, take it away, sir.
Thanks, Tim. Thank you, councilors. Chestnut Junior High Site, as I think most of you know, is a site in the north end that formerly housed the Chestnut Junior High School before a fire. We put out an RFP for the site, which has been fully cleared, and received three bids. We set up a committee that included Counselor Sean Curran, Armando Feliciano, Denise Jordan from the Housing Authority, and then from the city, Peter Garvey, Tim Sheehan, and Tina Sullivan, to review the three proposals. The three proposals were all very strong. We had Home City Development, who offered $150,000 with a proposal to develop 33 for-sale townhomes for households between incomes of 70% and 120% of the area median income. That project was an $11 million project that required some amount of public resources in the name of city home funding, as well as a new mass housing program that they plan to access. Another proposal was from Honor LLC, which included members of Last Builders and Rafer Pellegrino. They offered $150,001 with a proposal to develop 97 market-rate rental apartments, as well as 24 for-sale condominium units. That project was valued at $16 million, and required a commitment of the city for TIF/HDIP market-rate housing incentive in order to move that forward. And the third proposal was New North Citizens Council. They offered $150,000, and that was the minimum bid. That's why all the proposals are similar in the price range of 150. New North proposed to develop twin office buildings to house a number of community and health-based services, including a gymnasium, library, and physical therapy. Liberty Health Systems is serving as a partner in the development. The project budget is proposed to be $15 million, and does not require any public incentives. The committee was impressed by all proposals, was really happy to receive three strong proposals. After review and discussion, it ranked the New North Citizens Council proposal as the highest-scoring proposal. And some quick summary of reasons for that were that they thought it was most beneficial to the neighborhood in terms of services provided, job creation, and in line with the neighborhood anchors, Bay State Health and Mercy Medical. And the proposal was the only proposal that did not require public incentives to move forward. So with that, they made that recommendation to the mayor, who also approved of the recommendation of New North. And now, the plan is to bring it to city council to ratify it in order to proceed with the project.
All right. Thank you. Is there anything, anyone would like to add before we get to questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I'm going to open the floor for any of my colleagues that are here today would like to ask a question. We have Michael Fenton. Michael, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brian, that's great to hear, that there was such interest. Too often, we see only one proposer, so that's great. Do you have a, I don't know if anybody has screen-sharing ability, maybe at a future meeting, if you can't do it right now. What's the plan look like, if there is one so far, from New North, for what the development will be at that site? And if you don't have a visual, maybe you could just describe it in a little bit more detail.
Yeah, you know, I might be able to grab it here at some point, and hold it up to the camera, I guess, in the old-fashioned way. The proposal, at least in terms of a site plan, what we asked all of the proposals to do was to develop the property with the building on the street side, and the parking in the rear, because that's how that street has historically been developed. And New North did propose that. They have twin office buildings, where one is along Chestnut Street, and the other is kind of a little bit to the rear. So I can dig that up as, I guess the discussion moves on, to see if we can show something.
So it's two buildings, Brian, and they're both on the street front?
Yeah.
And they're going to use it, obviously, for their headquarters, and what else?
Their headquarters and Liberty Health Systems is a partner in the project. So they're actually providing the construction funding, and the New North ends up doing a leaseback situation. So there'll be medical offices there, there'll be physical therapy, but then there'll be other community services, like a gymnasium. I believe the Hispanic History Library will be located there potentially. So it's kind of a mix of community services, as well as health offices.
That's great. Thank you.
No problem. And I don't know if this will work, Mike, but I will try to hold it up to the cover. So Chestnut Street is down here, and so you have a building fronting and a building there.
Whoa, that is big. That is a lot bigger than I was expecting. Is that four stories?
It appears to be something in that range. They didn't, they gave us a square footage number. I can dig that up on the proposal.
That is a wonder.
A local architect, Al Nardi, who I believe is on the Historic Commission as well.
Wonderful.
If you have any more questions, you may. I apologize.
That's all.
All right, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions that is here?
No, sir.
No, sir? All right, fantastic.
I do not. I think it's the great proposal.
I know we have Tim, and also, if I'm right, Mr. Letterman. And Mr. Edwards is here on the call, so just want to give a chance for all the colleagues if they have any questions they may.
I have one question. If I could, just one question.
Of course, of course. You have the floor, Counsel Allen.
Thanks, Adam. The whereabouts on Chestnut is that? Just in what general area of Chestnut? Is that Apron Mountain Triangle area, or?
This is the former Chestnut Junior High Site, Counselor.
Former junior, all right. I didn't get that. Former Chestnut. Okay, good. Thank you.
So Brian, my question is, when do you foresee this coming in front of the council? Is it, obviously, is it this meeting, or is it going to be in October?
It would be at the next, it wouldn't be tonight. It would be at the next meeting, once the Law Department drafts up the developer designation paperwork.
All right. So, well, that's great news. I know that the city's been holding on to this property for about, I don't know, seems like almost over a decade. And we've put the RFP out for Chestnut many, many times. Me being the ward counselor, I'm very excited to see something happening there. And respectfully, you know, it's, you know, just for, just clarity, you know, I was on the board for New North Citizens Council, and myself, you know, I am also on the Board of Directors for Home City Housing, which had applied. So I just want to let the record reflect that. But for the most part, I know that I'm now, I have no other affiliations with New North Citizens Council or anything, but I just wanted to let the record show that I was affiliated with, once, one time with one organization, but affiliated with another one. But for the most part, I just want to say that I think the transparency with this project, you guys did a fantastic job. All three proposals seem to, I would have been happy with any of the three. Obviously, housing is something that, you know, we do need in the city of Springfield, and all three were, are comfortable, reputable developers. So I just want to thank Economic Development, you guys, for doing your due diligence in this process, and I'm really happy with the outcome. But for the most part, Brian, thank you and your team, and Tim Sheehan, for all the work you did to bring back, bringing back that piece of property. And hopefully, we'll see what it turns into.
Thank you, Counselor.
On the next agenda item, we're going to move on. We have Robert Roburge, and Maple Street, the HDIP update. So if somebody is here representing that, is it you guys again? Well, I think it's Richie Allen is here, joining us from our assessor's office. Richie, are you the one that's going to explain a little bit about this with us?
Counselor, I think what we really wanted to do is just give you an update as to the status of this, and what was going to be coming before you, probably in the not-too-distant future to the council.
Perfect. So I'll let you take it away. I'll let you take it away.
Brian, why don't you give a little bit of history as to, you know, what we ultimately were looking at with regards to the properties? And Roger then can take it and explain where he's at currently in the process.
Sure. So this project is, this is the Maple Street, Maple and Central Street, so the six row houses, and then the apartment building across the street from those at 169 Maple Street. So those are the properties we're talking about. The city at one time owned two of the row houses, and put those out for RFP several times with no takers. Roger Roburge and his company came along at our last RFP disposition, and put a proposal to us to do residential housing. And more than that, and I think most importantly, and kind of what's happened since then, is assembling the privately-owned properties at the rowhouse location. Because when you look at those properties, they're all attached, they really, in order to be done right, they had to be done by the same owner at the same time. And so it's been a few years, I think, since we sold the property to Roger's company. But what's happened since then is, in terms of lining up tax credits, and most importantly, assembling the privately-owned rowhouses, have put the project in a better position. So we've always talked about using the HDIP, that's the market-rate housing tax incentive for this project, like we have for the Overland Malls, and we have for Silver Brick. This is a project to do market rate, is going to need an incentive to work. And so I think Roger's looking at both Historics and this market rate incentive. And so there have been ongoing discussions between the Assessors Department and Roger, and I think we're in a good place where we expect to bring to the full council an HDIP proposal for the project. I would say probably in the month of October, and that will be similar to what you're seeing at some of the other HDIPs with Overland and Silver Brick. But today, we wanted to at least get Roger in front of you again, as it's been a while on the project, to let you know what's going on. There has been a little bit of active work there, and I think Roger can talk about that a little better than I can. Roger, you want to?
Mr. Roburge, you have the floor.
Absolutely. Thank you. Just to reiterate what Brian said, one of the critical components for stabilizing the rowhouses was the acquisition of all six parcels in the, you know, almost 200 years that those properties have been there. No one person's ever owned all six of them, because they share so many roof lines, and porches, and, you know, demising walls, that the development didn't really make sense. Also, converting those into a market-rate housing development provides, again, that long-term stability that I think we're looking for, that it's one of the gateways into the cities downtown, and I think it has a pretty large impact for revitalization of that area there. Additionally, across the street, the 169 Maple Street, that's that five-story brick building, it's 11 units over there. That's a nice anchor for that package and portfolio as well. That property's been plagued by systemic heating and cooling issues over the course of the years. 11 units going in there, modern amenities, and, you know, again, same thing, providing that long-term stability that we're looking for. Over the course of the past few years, been able to be fully awarded and approved state and federal historic tax credits. And at this point, really the last piece of the puzzle on the sources side of the house is the TIF and the HDIP application. Been in conversations with the assessor's office. Obviously, one of the important things is setting the values correctly and having appropriate numbers. We've done the sharpening of the pencils and gone through the properties at length with their office, and very supportive, and I think we're getting closer to being able to put something in front of the council, but wanted to be able to shop it, you know, with you guys, and get any questions answered ahead of time.
I don't know if Richie, Richie, if you want to provide any background from your perspective as well? I think Richie's still muted.
I think he has, I think he was having a connection problem, because it is showing that his, his mic, I can ask him to unmute.
But I don't have a microphone.
Can you folks hear him?
I think we have a bad reception with him. I'm not sure. I hear him coming in and out.
Mr. Chairman, can you? Okay, Richie, why don't you just offer whatever comment you can, and if they can't hear it, then I'll just translate it for you.
Okay. So, good afternoon, councilors and Roger. I agree with what they said. We've been saying the assessor's office has been working with Roger, the ability to bring that project online. And, you know, we've been up there a couple of times to go through the property with him, and we think that it's, it's ready for redevelopment, and will be a major asset, and removal of an ice floor there. So we don't have a specific proposal right now for council consideration, but I just want everyone to know that we are making progress, and look forward to presenting something as Tim Sheehan indicates in the not-too-distant future.
Great. Thanks for it, Richie.
I heard, I heard a significant amount of that. I don't know if anybody else needed a little bit more translation. I know we have a question in the queue. Counsel Letterman, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being here. I was glad to see this item on the agenda. I had, was just sitting at the stoplight over there yesterday, and was wondering the status. I know we had met last summer, I believe, you know, generally around the same time for an update. I'm just curious kind of what progress has been made on the project since our last meeting about a year ago. And I'm also wondering, I understand it sounds like you're, you know, working out an HDIP agreement, and I'm just wondering, what public funds have thus far been granted for the project, and what is the total amount on that, if any?
So for the 169 Maple Street project, like you said, we have state and federal historic tax credits, and those are up to 20% of the qualified rehabilitation expenses. So our total construction cost estimate over there is about $1.6 million. And so the 20% numbers on those. We're also awarded some funds from the Springfield Preservation Trust Fund for the redevelopment of that property and the rowhouses across the street, and believe that's a $400,000. That's a hybrid funding program, about $200,000 of that is grant money, and the other $200,000 is a loan. Additionally, we did make an application for some CPA funds. Were recently awarded some CPA funds last year's round. I want to say approximately $100,000 on the 169 Maple, and, you know, 130, I believe, on the rowhouses. I'll double-check on that. And then the final piece on the sources side of the house is this HD application.
Okay, that sounds about right. And just wondering, again, kind of what progress has been made since our last meeting a year ago, and then kind of what your anticipated construction schedule looks like moving forward.
Absolutely. You know, because we're not fully funded, we don't have permanent financing in place, so some of the construction's been limited. We were able to make some additional stabilization improvements to the property, namely, a full roof replacement at 169 Maple. Recently, we've been able to go ahead and preliminarily install all the electrical infrastructure, brand-new meter bank and underground service line. We're currently waiting for EverSource to make the final connection there. It was supposed to be done last week, but EverSource has been backed up, I think, with the COVID-related delays on new service installations. So we may see that next week. And additionally, we were able to go and clean out the 169 building from basement to roof. Pretty substantial clean-out efforts underway there. We're moving across the street to the rowhouses to kind of take the same approach. Roofing there has already been done. We did a number of stabilization items over there, and then the boarding and securing, and, you know, cleanliness is ongoing.
Okay. So once, once you are fully funded, then what's the construction timetable, you know, to the final rehabilitation and bringing it to market?
Well, we're estimating about nine months of construction at 169 Maple. And the rowhouses are probably about 12 months of construction.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any of my colleagues have any more questions? Now is the time. I have no questions. I'm kind of satisfied that Mr. Letterman had asked the questions that I was going to inquire. We know, Mr. Roburge, I just want to say that, you know, you have come in front of us many of times, and this is a project, I think, that most of the council wants to see happen. And we want to, you know, you have, realistically, have traveled down every single avenue to try to make it work, and I commend you on the progress. And I want to tell you that, you know, just keep on pushing, and hopefully, soon enough, we're going to see the beautiful, these beautiful buildings come back online. So, you know, you have my best, and thank you for coming. I don't think we have any more questions, or if there's anything else that Economic Development would like to add.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if Alvin had anything to add from the Historic Commission's perspective.
No problem. And Mr. Alvin Allen, do you have anything to add, sir?
I do not.
All right. Thank you so much. All right. So moving on, moving on to our next agenda item, we have Chestnut Street, Apron Mountain Triangle Plan Update. Mr. Tim Sheehan, you may take it away.
Mr. Chairman, this particular plan was brought forward because on his departure, Kevin Kennedy actually indicated to me that some planning work really needed to be done in the blast zone area. It had been a period in time since the blast that occurred, and there had been some UMass studies that looked at the area, but there hadn't been any comprehensive planning done for the whole corridor. And that was the genesis of this planning effort and moving it forward, was to begin to address how the area was going to be redeveloped, what it was going to be redeveloped with, and the concentration that we had was basically looking at market rate in the downtown, and the close proximity of that, this area to the train station, giving you, you know, a sense of transit-oriented development, and also looking at improvements to
Excuse me, Mr. Sheehan.
The public infrastructure, namely Chestnut Street. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, Mr. Sheehan. Is it, is it me, or does, are we having a bad connection? I just don't want to miss any of the information. I don't know if it's myself or you. Is everybody here, Mr. Tim Sheehan, fine? Or is it?
He's breaking, he's breaking up a little bit, Mr. Chairman.
I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't the only one.
Okay, not that.
No, it's, we're in this age of connectivity. We want to make sure that you are, you are heard loud and clear, and I know this is vital information. I didn't want nobody to miss it. So if you want, if we could start, start a little bit over, I apologize. You were just really chopping up, and I apologize for disrupting you.
Sure. Let me know if it happens again. As I was indicating, Kevin Kennedy indicated that, when he was departing, that this particular area needed to have some planning consideration. Broad had been done in the area, but there hadn't been any comprehensive planning initiatives undertaken since the blast. And it definitely was time to cast a good look at, you know, planning for what this area should be going forward. Obviously, the area is in close proximity to the train station, giving a sense of transit-oriented development to the area. And the focus was basically on how to increase the housing stock in the area, get more people on the street in that particular section of the city, and create more neighborhood continuity, and also look at the public infrastructure, namely, the street and the pedestrian right of way, and what improvements could be made there. And also look at the open space. Quite frankly, many people that live in that area consider Apron Mountain Triangle, you know, the open space of the neighborhood. And, you know, clearly, there's a need to have more than just a traffic. And to that end, Michael's group, we hired them as the consulting entity to do the plan. And I think we, we've brought forward a number of issues for consideration going forward, and hopefully, we'll be advancing implementation of the plan in the not-too-distant future. But I think it was important that, you know, we spend some time with the committee to basically have Michael walk you through, you know, what has been brought forward, so that at least you have an understanding of it, and we can address any concerns that you might have. So with that, I'll be quiet, and Michael can actually take it from here.
Okay, thanks, Tim. And good afternoon, councilors. I just learned about this meeting just a short while ago, but I have a number of presentations that we've shared with, you know, most recently, the mayor and others. And if you would like, I can maybe share a dozen images to give you an overview of what we've been looking at. If I can share my screen, would that work?
I have no objection. Can we give him the access to be able to share his screen, please?
Let me see if I can make that work. Let's see. Are you all able to see that now?
Yes, I can, I can see it. I think folks that have a phone that are on the line cannot see it.
Okay, well.
For myself, I can see it for the most part.
Okay, great. Well, I'll try to just breeze through this and give you a little more of an expanded overview, dovetailing with what Tim said. And we've enjoyed working with Tim and Brian and Scott Hanson over the last, I guess, five or six months or so. You can see here on this first slide, the study area that's bounded, you know, roughly by Chestnut Street, Lyman, Spring Street, and Pearl. And, you know, as was mentioned, there are a number of studies that have been done in recent years, including some by UMass. There's a study about six years ago by another planning firm called UTeal. You know, by the way, I'm not sure I've given you my full introduction, but I'm an architect and a planner with an architecture firm in Newton area called Form and Place. And we've done a lot of work over the years. And we've done a lot of work over the years in Springfield from everyone from mass development to working with Davenport companies on some of the MGM work and Springfield Rescue Mission and whatnot. So I'm intimately familiar with the city. But so it was a really nice opportunity to look at this particular area in the Northeast Downtown District. So some of the key aspects that we were trying to expand on from previous studies and really look at how implementation strategy might be developed included, you know, focusing on residential density because of the transit-oriented location there, realizing that there's some terrific, you know, building blocks in the neighborhood for adaptive reuse and thinking about some possible public improvements that could really stimulate private investment in the area. Our focus quickly shifted to concentrating on the Chestnut Street corridor, seeing that as really the spine for the neighborhood, if you will, because of its connectivity to the exits off of the highway and the direct route into the downtown. Apramont Triangle, as Tim mentioned, is, has a really interesting potential to become a more usable public open space. And again, you can see we did some studies focusing on a few key sites to really explore what kind of residential density we could fit into this particular district. There were some other studies that looked at open space integration. I think one of the key things to remember is in the Springfield, you know, a Complete Streets Implementation Guide, they really highlight the Chestnut Street corridor as something that should become a two-way downtown corridor. And that that could really bring revitalization to a sort of a mixed-use spine there with, you know, ground floor, retail shops, restaurants, and then residential sort of building up around that. And this is a diagram from the Complete Streets diagram. So we, we looked closely at the street section and did some studies for the different, you know, sections all the way down to State Street, actually, and concluded that we could probably do a two-way thoroughfare with bike lanes integrated all the way down to Harrison. And it would remain one-way heading northbound from State Street to Harrison potentially. But this would offer a really nice opportunity to sort of connect through the neighborhood to the downtown. So this, the focus, you know, I'm just going to show you a little bit how we, we thought about this. This Chestnut Street corridor here, this is what we're proposing, sort of changing it to a two-way. And then really re-looking at the Apramont Triangle area, perhaps disconnecting this leg of Pearl Street so that we have a two-way condition happening here all the way from Bridge Street all the way down to Dwight. Here's some imagery that gives you a sense of what Apramont could, could become as a larger open green space by closing off that section of street through there and sort of repositioning the Bernie Building to have some ground floor retail and maybe some townhouses. Here's sort of a street-level rendering of sort of quality of experience that could happen. You can see the bike lanes passing along Chestnut in the foreground. And so our study began to not only think about Apramont, but also, you know, the, perhaps down to the Absorbing Junior Building and sort of how that whole corridor could develop. Here are just a couple more images that give you a sense of, of what the Chestnut Street corridor could look like as a two-way street. You can see the bike lanes and a lot of activity in the public realm happening. This is down, taking sort of aerial view, looking back down Chestnut from Lyman Street in the Absorbing Junior Building on the right-hand side. Again, opportunities for outdoor dining, expanded sidewalks, bike racks, all that, really becoming sort of the conduit for redevelopment in the neighborhood. And, and there's a lot of, we did a technical study as well using Alan and Major. This is my last slide, but Alan and Major assisted us in looking at the technical aspects of the conversion of Chestnut Street to two-way. It also involved reversing the flow on Hillman Street. So the traffic would now head down from Chestnut to Dwight and, and then having the Bridge Street leg here pass through as a two-way street as well. So all of these aspects are sort of combining to give us a sort of an implementable, implementable first phase of, of how to revitalize this neighborhood. So that's a quick overview. I don't know, Brian or Tim, if you want to expand on that at all, but.
I just want to indicate to the committee members that it's never good to leave just the planners and the economic development people on their own. What we ultimately had, we got significant input on the plan, positive input from DPW. And Chris was, was directly involved in a number of discussions about the modifications that the plan suggests relative to Chestnut Street. And additionally, Pat Sullivan was involved in the discussions about the various open space components of the plant. So I wanted to acknowledge that they, they are fully supportive and have been involved in the process. Mr. Chairman, we can go to any questions that anybody might have.
Marcus, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim and Mike, I really appreciate the presentation. I took a course once that was titled The Main Street Route to Revitalization or something to that effect. And although Chestnut, of course, is not main, I think it has like, you know, similar capability to be something more vibrant and lively and really maybe add to the tax base in Springfield as well with some of the more vacant lots there. So it's really great to hear about this project and its potential. I was just wondering, like, are you seeking something from the committee today? And what does the phases kind of, how does that look moving forward?
Well, we're not really looking for anything from the committee at this point. I wanted to actually bring it to the committee so that folks were informed about the plan. Our next step is actually to bring this out for public comment and review. We're setting up a series of public meetings around the plan to have, get public input on it and, you know, get some level of consensus around what ultimately we would like to bring forward back to you and ultimately get support for. And in terms of timeline, before I get to that, I also think, you know, Chestnut Street offers an opportunity for us to take a smaller incremental step to getting to improvements that we would be looking at long-term on Dwight Street. As all of you know, Dwight Street is, is not pedestrian-friendly. And it basically is almost a highway that goes through the city. And clearly there needs to be, you know, some road diet and better public amenities in that public right-of-way. So I think this is kind of an incremental step, seeing what we can do with Chestnut, try and figure out, you know, what the longer-term solutions are going to be for Dwight as well. In terms of our timeline, I'd like to get through the, the public input within the next couple of months and be advancing forward, seeking state funding to do some portion of the implementation of the plan.
Tim, I, you know, I'll just finish with, conceptually, I think the project makes a lot of sense. You know, and of course, I know public comment will allow for the period for, you know, folks, you know, residents to, to weigh in and all of that. And I know you guys will take that seriously. So again, I just want to thank you for introducing it. I think it would add a lot to that corridor. And I see, I look forward to see where it's going.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you. Any more colleagues have any more questions? Again, any of my colleagues have any more questions? All right. I just wanted to say that I'm very familiar with this, with this corner or this area. Obviously, it's in Port Juan. It's in downtown metro. I used to own a store at the corner. I used to make the bet leaves a long time ago in my head in K D. My only concern is just a question is just when we do the public comment. And a lot of the business owners that are there now that are existing have always asked because they knew that this project might be coming up. It's just if, you know, once we do the public comment, just to include a lot of the business owners, because some of those businesses are staying around because of this potential development. So it can help them flourish as well. With that, just take a little bit of note of that. And that's something that we can talk about in the near future. Just want to appreciate all of you guys that came, that came by. And if you can send that, those pictures that you had shared with us with Mr. Wang, if you can share or if Tim can share with the council, that'd be, that'd be most appreciated. Thank you so much. There's, without objection, I want to move on to the next agenda item so we can stay prompt with our timeframe of keeping this meeting within an hour. All right. Our next item on the agenda is amending the city ordinance, which will allow the removal of the historic exception on the Springfield Museum. I know that this was brought forth and communicated to me through Mr. Alvin Allen. I'll let you take it away. And we have a representative from Springfield Museum. And then from there, we'll take questions from the council.
Yes. Good evening, councilors. I'm just coming before you guys today just to let you know that the Quadra Angle Mattoon Local Historic District was created in 1972. Once the, when the district was created, there were several properties that were not, or they are within the district boundary, but however, they've been excluded from the restrictions that have been placed on those particular structures within the local historic district. Those properties include the Springfield Museum properties, as well as the Springfield Library, as well as also the Springfield Diocese property. So the Springfield museums of late have, they've gone before the Committee of Preservation Committee for, for grant funding through the CPA Grant Act. And they've received funding from the, I'm sorry, the Committee of Preservation Committee. And as a part of receiving those grant funds, they've been asked, or, yeah, they've been asked to remove their exemption status that they have on their property from withholding those restrictions of the Quadra Angle Mattoon Local Historic District. So I've been contacted by the Springfield Historic, I'm sorry, the Springfield Museums. And the Springfield Museums came before the Springfield Historical Commission on June 18th to request a letter of support for the removal of their exemption status. And on that particular date of June 18th, they were approved by the Historical Commission and they were given a letter of support to move forward with the removal of the exemption status. Now, in order to remove that exemption status, the city, the city would have to amend the city ordinance to allow that to occur.
All right.
You did a great job. But it's, but it's also specific to the Science Museum, according to the letter.
That is correct. So this is only pertaining to 21 Edward Street, the Springfield Science Museum. And again, the Springfield museums have several properties, but it's just pertaining to this one particular structure.
If I was, I know this is not your, your kind of area, Mr. Allen. But the Science Museum, I think, last year received some CPC funds. So if you had to get some rehab on the roof or something like that, I'll write, sir.
Mr. Soriello, can you speak to that?
Yes, yes, we did receive funds for the, to replace the science roof. And it's because of that that they're asking for this exemption for the science building.
I believe I lost you. Maybe it's me. I'm not sure. I just wanted to reconnect with everybody here in clearly.
Yes.
All right. I think I'm having connection. Counselor Hirsch, President Hirsch has a question. You have the floor, sir.
Yeah, just a, just a quick question. How did, I don't, I don't think we need to rehash it too much, but how were you guys able to receive CPA funding if you are not already included in the historical district? How did that work?
I think it was because of the fact that we were going to be applying for that exemption that they allowed it. But I don't know for certain.
Okay. Thank you.
We just made sure we were not going to, you know, we, we made sure that we wouldn't object to it.
Got it. Thank you.
Counselor Letterman, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure I understood what was going on correctly. So you're saying that the quadrangle essentially, or the museums' buildings are not currently included in the Mattoon Street Historic District via a specific exemption in the ordinance, but that we are asking to unexempt the Science Museum only?
Correct.
Is somewhat semantics, but I'm just curious why we wouldn't have just created a single district for the Science Museum as we've done with other areas in the past? I'm certainly all for expanding historic protections to as many historic properties as want them. But I'm just wondering why we're going back through the process of revising the existing ordinance and not just creating a historic district for the Science Museum so they can have greater access to historic funds?
Counselor Letterman, if I could respond.
Of course, yeah.
This property is actually already within the district, the bound, the district boundaries of the Quadra Angle Mattoon. It's just not under the same guidelines as the other properties within the district. And that's due to, again, that there was a court, a court decision that was made back in the 70s that allowed this exemption to occur for particular properties that were owned by the Springfield Museums.
Okay, all right. That's fine. I support it. I was just curious.
All right. Counselor Hirsch, Counselor Hirsch, President Hirsch has another question. You may.
Just a quick follow-up. Why, why only this Springfield Science Museum and why not the other, the other museums?
This is the way it's been going, I think, with past, you know, when we've received money from certain funders in the past. It's only been pertaining to the buildings that we've received funding for. Other than that, I don't know why.
Thank you.
All right. Any more of my colleagues have, Counselor Hirsch, do you have another question?
I'm just trying to take my hand down. Sorry. Okay, thank you, sir.
No problem, sir. Thank you. All right. Any more questions for my colleagues? I have a question for Michael Fenton. Counselor Fenton, you have the floor.
Thanks. Let me see if I can do this here. So it's So this is the map for the Quadra Angle Historic District. And Elliot Street, see how almost every other parcel, it's the whole parcel that's in the district? For some reason, it seems like the, just the frontage on Elliot Street of the main Springfield museums parcel is included. And so I don't know if that's because there's another district that the museums are in. These are the museums. Or whether it's that when they created the district, they just wanted that frontage on Elliot Street to be under the jurisdiction of the commission. But I guess that's sort of.
I don't believe we have any frontage on Elliot Street. I think that's the church.
Oh, Edward Street. I'm spun around. You're right. So Edward Street. So this, oh. So it looks like it's all in it. Okay. This is, what I was pointing to is the former tech.
That's correct. Yes. This is the data center.
All right. I understand now. Thank you.
All right. If there's any more questions. All right. In closing, you know, I just want to thank everybody for joining us today on these, you know, highly, one, anticipated and, you know, important projects moving forward. It's a very exciting time still during the pandemic. We still have a lot of work that's, has to be done on the economic level here in the city of Springfield. It brings me joy that most of these projects aren't awarded one. But at the same time, you know, you know, these are just the vibrant and resurgence of that Renaissance that those spinoffs and things that people were waiting for and that people are still waiting for. I think that we're in a good place. But respectfully, you know, I just look forward to hearing this on the floor and hearing for the rest of my colleagues on what is their feelings on, on, in any case of these matters. And then it just seems that, you know, something that we can look into. And then it just seems that, you know, something that we can look into, Mr. Allen, is that, you know, we pick and choose what we want to put on the hyster, on the historic's, you know, radar. And something that probably the historic commission can look at is, how can we create that whole district, a historic area? And I'm interested in doing that before I, you know, depart and leave the council in the near future. I just think that, you know, that whole parcel, specifically from State Street or to classical condominiums, all the way to the Willie's overlay, we have a lot of beautiful buildings there. And instead of having these small historical districts, and respectfully to what we're doing at Apramont Triangle, I think that's something that we should look into, like what we did at Colony Hill, like a whole neighborhood or what's going on in McKnight. Because I know those, some of those buildings in the back area that we're going to be looking into, that's right there in front of Pearl Street, those are very old buildings as well. And obviously, they're really beautiful buildings that we want to keep and be able to save. And that's just my two cents. Just take a note about that. We can work on that for the near future. I mean, closing, I just want to say, you guys are all appreciated. Thanks for your hard work. And the council looks forward to working hard, making sure that we bring the success to Springfield when it comes to the economic development. All of you have a great afternoon and look forward to talking to you guys soon. Take care.